...nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistel. Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Bens.
Here.
Taylor Sipos.
Here.
Sage Gwynn.
The record show Mr. Alt stopped in and informed the board secretary he would be unable to attend this evening. Citizens comments? No comment cards this evening, Mr. President. Thank you, Mance. It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of February 5th and February 12th, 2015 board meetings. Need a motion?
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions or comments, changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Citizens in finance fund accounts? It is recommended that the board approve the February 2015 treasures report and the February 2015 bills payable. Need a motion?
motion.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions or comments since you just received this evening? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel. Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Old business. All under, uh, excuse me, just under fund accounts and finances, Mr. Mornell did hand out a topic, a financial affairs update for you, so I would just call your attention to that and encourage you to read that at your convenience, just to highlight one thing, and I'll let Mr. Mornell talk a little bit more about this, but we received a Standard and Poor's new rating, so Mr. Mornell, would you like to talk a little about our Standard and Poor's rating?
I set on the table a little financial affairs update. Again, we passed off the details of the governor's proposal last week. Second attachment is a letter from the leaders of the state senate that, you know, basically telling us, you know, don't count on the money or, you know, don't count your chickens until the eggs hatch. Third attachment is a letter from PDE informing us after reviewing our resolution that was passed last month and that we're allowed to, you know, raise taxes potentially up to the Act One limit, and we're not able to seek referendum exceptions and place a referendum before the voters, and we know that. And in the back, attachment number four is a financial rating report that we got from Standard and Poor's. Worked on this report with the rating agency late February into early March over a period of several days, exchanging information, went through several phone interviews, and I'm excited about the report. They reaffirmed our A rating, A slash stable, and they further noted that the possibility exists of them raising our rating if the district should, and I quote, "continue to bolster reserves and economic indicators improved to levels commensurate with a higher rating." And as I told the raiders that, the rating agency, that we have the potential here because of the highway project, interchange project nearing completion, that, you know, the potential for further development in that area exists. Plus, you know, the Westmoreland Industrial Development Authority has been converting the old Sony Volkswagen Chrysler plant into two technology parks. This is very good for us, and he was, you know, they were excited about that, so, this is good news, in light of weathering a terrible economic recession. I encourage you to read the report in detail. The raider gave me hints on what we can do to further improve our financial condition, and I'm going to work on some of those, and I'll be bringing them to you in the future. So, very, very excited about the report. It's got some good information in it. I highlighted some areas, and if you can read my chicken scratch, I made some notes on there mainly for myself, but one thing he did mention was, you know, we don't have a formal fund balance policy. We know we have a fund balance, and we know we want to preserve it, try to enhance it, not utilize it for operational expenditure, but I'm going to draft a policy and bring it to you in the next couple of months that will document that and send that to Standard and Poor's. I told them that, you know, we're, I'm working on a long-range financial plan, as well as we're working on a capital improvement plan, and when we complete that, of course, I'll be giving that to you and sending it to Standard and Poor's. So, I think I like it. We're stable, we're solid, they mentioned our sound budgeting practices, stable area, moderate debt burden for capital, so, I like it. I'm pleased with that.
Thanks, Mr. Mornell. It's always nice when an independent agency, especially one with the reputation of Standard and Poor's, pronounces, you know, your school district or your organization to be in very good financial health, and that's what we have here, so we're quite pleased with that rating we received.
I like the A rating, but I'm going to push for, you know, an A-plus rating, or is there, I think their next level up is, you know, double A, stable, so, it's got to have something to shoot for. Thank you.
If I have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Old business, seeing none. Um, I'm adjourned to executive session. That's fine, yeah. Any motion adjourned to executive session? That would be for personnel, real estate.
Student adjudication.
And student adjudication.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Mr. Polakowski, all those in favor. Mr. Beistel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight to one. New business, policy revisions? It's recommended that the board approve the posted policy revisions to the following policies. Policy 006, meetings. Policy 903, public participation in board meetings. Policy 004, board membership. Policy 302, employment of superintendent and assistant superintendent. Policy 304, employment of district staff. Policy 305, employment of substitutes. Policy 306, employment of summer school staff. Policy 309, assignment and transfer. Policy 317, disciplinary procedures. And policy 818, contracted services. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mrs. Love. Questions? Roll call, please. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this. They come as a bundle, and we've discussed them, but on the public discussion, I think it's, I'm going to vote for it because I think it's better to err on the side of being open, more open than not. Having said that, on comments at the end of the meeting, citizen comments at the end of the meeting, I only confess that I have not, number one, they don't affect the vote that can't be at the next meeting, and frankly, I, in my time here, I've never heard one that wasn't fairly predictable by one or two people using this opportunity to address us. So, that's my only comment.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Adoption of new policies? It is recommended that the board adopt the following new policies as posted. Policy 317.1, educator misconduct. And policy 808.1, student meal charges. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Revision of early retirement incentive? It is recommended that the board approve a revision to Section Four of the Southmoreland School District Retirement Incentive Plan of 2015 for teachers to read. The teacher must, A, be at least 55 years of age with a minimum of 10 years of continuous service in this school district, or have at least 20 years of service in the public school employees retirement system. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second by Mrs. Love. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes seven to one with one absent. Abolish policies 404, 405, 406, 409, and 417. It is recommended that the board abolish the following policies because they are redundant. Policy 404, employment of professional employees. Policy 405, employment of substitute professional employees. Policy 406, employment of summer school staff. Policy 409, assignment and transfer. Policy 417, disciplinary procedures. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Junior varsity cheer squad? Like to entertain a motion that we table this item.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second by Mrs. Love. Um, do we, just do voiceover.
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero, one absent. SAP agreement? It is recommended that the board approve the 2015-2016 student assistance program agreement. Um, motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Adelphi contract? It is recommended that the board approve the 2014-2015 Adelphi contract for partial hospitalization services. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero, one absent. New directions agreement? It is recommended that the board approve the 2015-2016 agreement with new directions for educational services. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero, one absent. All-state honors ban. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight trip to Hershey for the all-state honors ban students from Wednesday, March 25th through Saturday, March 28th, 2015, and just to remind you, those students are Katie Kimmel, Blaise Wizneski, and Jason Monroe. Quite proud of those folks. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mrs. Shipley. Mrs. Shipley, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Tenant of agreement? It is recommended that the board ratify the successor agreement to the contract between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association that is set to expire on June 30th, 2015. Just to highlight some of the changes, the areas where changes occurred in that contract would be hours of employment, grievance procedure, scheduling, individualized education programs, evaluation, extracurricular activities, required meetings or hearings, wage and salary provision, and other employee benefits. Highlighting a couple things in terms of the wage and salary provision, new money added to the contract was approximately 1.3% per year, which is under the standard cost of living, and under employee benefits, the employee health benefit, the employee share was at 8%, but it is now an uncapped situation. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments? Yeah, I'd like to comment. I'd like to, first of all, thank the Southmoreland Education Association for their cooperation in getting this done in a rather expeditious way, and also the members of the committee. There was a lot of hard work on both sides that went into making this happen. We decided from the beginning of the process that we were going to try to make this a collaborative process where we could work together to solve issues that the association had and issues that the district had. We were able to do so in a very collegial and collaborative manner. We did not use any outside negotiators, nor did we use a state mediator. We sat across the table from each other as colleagues should, and we got the job done. So, my appreciation to both sides. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Personnel, FMLA. It is recommended that the board approve a family medical leave for Doug Craig from March 11th through March 18th, 2015. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Middle school baseball volunteer coaches? It is recommended that the board approve the following as volunteer middle school baseball coaches. Dan Boring, Nick DeSantis, and Trevor Placta, pending receipt of clearances. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Finance committee meeting? It is recommended that the board schedule a finance committee meeting for March 26th, 2015, in the middle school cafeteria at 7:00 PM. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. Can we do a voiceover?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Student discipline matter, 2014-15-106. It is recommended that the board hereby adopts the decision of the board as a committee of the whole, and that the adjudication in the matter of the above identified student disciplinary action be and hereby is ratified in all respects to the same extent as set forth therein as the action of the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District, and the administration is directed to take all actions consistent herewith, and the secretary is to send copies of the adjudication and this resolution to the effect of student and parent slash guardian by certified mail. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Student discipline matter, 2014-15-107. It is recommended that the board hereby adopts the decision of the board as a committee of the whole, and that the adjudication in the matter of the above identified student disciplinary action be and hereby is ratified in all respects to the same extent as set forth therein as the action of the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District, and the administration is directed to take all actions consistent herewith, and the secretary is to send copies of the adjudication and this resolution to the effect of student and parent slash guardian by certified mail. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bens.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Board report, student report?
Student Taylor Robbins. Attached is a list of 2015 graduates. Senior chorus member Stephen Murphy has advanced to region chorus. The festival took place February 25th to 27th at Trinity High School in Washington, PA. He also attended the district festival at Bethel Park High School in January. The cast has been selected for this year's high school play, A Dark and Stormy Night. After-school and weekend practices started in February, performances are set for April 9th through 11th at the high school auditorium with curtain at 7:30 PM. Please see the WIU news attachment. Southmoreland Alpha students attended the World Affairs Council of Pittsburgh held at Greater Laitrobe Senior High School on Thursday, February 12th. The Alpha students had an opportunity to attend a global issue seminar regarding national security challenges for 2015. A panel of seven military officials and one civilian presented information regarding various subjects ranging from foreign affairs, diplomacy, ISIS, Ebola, and many other topics. Michael Conroy, Hudson Nicholson, Josh McHugh, Sage Gwynn, Brendan Hickson, Jacob Smithola, and Matthew Kinter were then able to participate in a question-answer period after the presentation. Great job, Southmoreland Alpha students, and please see the World Affairs Council of Pittsburgh attachment.
Congratulations to Anna Sawinski, Emily Donovan, and Jordan Polakowski, winners of the 2015 Student Keystone Press Awards Contest sponsored by the Pennsylvania News Media Association. Anna won a second-place award for her feature story, In the Face of Death, which recalled the story of retired Scottsdale Police Chief Ralph Rich, and his ordeal in which he was held at gunpoint and eventually disarmed, and eventually disarmed a gunman peacefully. Emily won a second-place award in the sports category for her story entitled Inspirational Coaches, and Jordan received an honorable mention in the sports category for his story, Southmoreland Reverses Fortunes, A Winner Once Again, about the basketball team's return this year to the WPIL playoffs. Congratulations to Anna, Emily, and Jordan. Kennywin tickets will go on sale April 9th in the high school during lunches and the cafeteria for $26. Bus tickets will be sold the same day. They will be $5 cash only. All buses leave the park promptly at 7:00 PM. The Southmoreland Mock Trial Team made the semifinals and lost in a very close competition to Greensburg-Salem. Only four Westmoreland County schools make it to the semifinals, so it's a great accomplishment. The guidance counselors have been busy entering schedule requests for the 2015-2016 school year. They are meeting individually with each student, making sure that they are on track with future plans and graduation requirements. The ASVAB test was administered at the high school, and results are being rewarded with all participants. Colleges are again visiting the high school to meet with seniors that are still unsure of plans after graduation, and seniors are busy completing scholarship applications to help ease their college financial burdens. The ASVAB test was administered at the high school, and results are being rewarded with all participants. Colleges are again visiting the high school to meet with seniors that are still unsure of plans after graduation, and seniors are busy completing scholarship applications to help ease their college financial burdens.
Thank you. CWCCC report? WIU report?
Yeah, we voted to retain a Kazane and Johnston and Associates to conduct a physical needs assessment of the Claireview facility. We are again voting tomorrow night on the lease, the twenty-year lease, and we'll be report back after that vote.
Thank you. Thank you. PSBA liaison report?
Was introduced by Representative Mike Reese of Westmoreland County, and it passed last week. It's a charter school reform measure that would provide transparency and clarity. The House Bill five thirty begins the process of making charter schools' spending and academic performance more accountable to the taxpayer who funds them. A few examples of this is direct pay requirement. So, payments to the charter schools would come directly from the Department of Education. The charter school must provide documentation to the PDE and the school district thirty days before any payment will be made. The student's residence must also be verified. An advisory commission will be created to look at the cost of educating a student in a cyber charter school, and to consider how charters are funded, and make recommendations for appropriate funding. The bill also requires the State Board of Education to create a performance matrix and regulations to measure and assess the academic performance of the charter school. There's a lot more to this bill, but I just picked out a few things. Again, it's a beginning that should save school districts money, and more importantly, it will make the charter schools more academically accountable. On another issue, State Representative Kalkovich will be introducing legislation that would require Pennsylvania school districts to conduct lockdown drills two times a year. Schools already do fire drill evacuations, and this would be practice for the schools and the students in case of an intruder. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Benz, can I, because it's PSBA, can I just tie in a little bit here? The, this ties into the Pennsylvania School Boards Association meeting and the annual convention, and this agreement that we just ratified and we voted on, which, by the way, I consider probably in the year or two years, the most important vote I've taken, that I've given, because it's seventy-five percent of our budget, and it is what we order in, education and the teachers. But this is what kind of came to my memory. There was a seminar on, and I'm using this to just say, I don't know technically what the name of it was, but it was on collaborative bargaining versus adversarial bargaining in working with the Education Association. And there was a case study, and, Mrs. Rhodes, Dr. Molnar, I think you were there too, weren't you? But maybe not, okay. But in any case, and the room was filled, literally, people were sitting in
I was sitting on hallway.
In the aisles and in the hallway and everywhere, because people were interested. And I saw our people there, they were sort of bright-eyed and thinking, and I'm always a little suspicious of, you know, how is this gonna work? But as I heard it tonight, this was the, this was the attempt, and actually, it works on good faith on both sides. So, just, I was just happy to hear the report, and it was a very, very fascinating, because and I don't want to at all say that it was totally in part, came out of that, but certainly a seed was sown there of an idea, and I'm just glad the way it worked out here for our district, and yeah, so that's all.
Superintendent's report?
Yeah, last week I told you that we might table policy three oh seven, dealing with student teachers and interns, because we were waiting on revisions. Those revisions did arrive this afternoon. We'd like some time to go through those and work through them, and I'll be bringing three oh seven to you for your consideration at next month's voting meeting. It's necessary to revise the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school calendar to reflect additional snow days, and you have a copy of that calendar in front of you. We will be able to keep graduation on May twenty-ninth, provided we have no more snow days. But in order to do that, the class sponsors and the seniors will need to conduct three commencement rehearsals on Saturdays, because the school code allows three Saturday rehearsals to count as student days of attendance for seniors. So, by doing that, and the sponsors are willing to do that, we can keep graduation set where it was on May twenty-ninth, and then the additional three days would be tacked on to the end of the year for the underclassmen. So, we're gonna entertain a motion and a second on that calendar revision, please.
Need a motion, please?
Amy?
Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions?
Are you two going to protest keeping graduation where?
Questions from the audience, non-agenda item? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent.
As you may already know, three of our wrestlers qualified for the state tournament, which was held this past weekend in Hershey. Those individuals were Jake Beistel, Tyler Griffiths, and Evan Myers. We didn't have this information, obviously, in time for last week's voting meeting, so I'm going to ask you to approve that overnight trip to Hershey for these athletes from March five through seven retroactively. Pleased to say those athletes all represented themselves real well. They represented their schools, their school very nicely also. Tyler Griffiths placed eighth in his weight class, and Jake Beistel was number two in the state in his weight class. Congratulations to those three who were able to represent us at states.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Questions from the audience, non-agenda item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent.
Frank R. McNoly has submitted his resignation. He is an assistant equipment hauler for the Southmoreland Marching Band, so we're gonna entertain a motion at this time to accept his resignation and post the position, please.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Questions from the audience, non-agenda item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent.
Last week, Mr. Pushkar talked to you a little bit about our school messenger, the robo-calling program that we're planning to acquire. And we're hoping to have this system operational by the end of the month, so that we'll be able to, you know, trial it for the last few months of school, and then hopefully, you know, have it up and running on a permanent basis the beginning of next year. We provided you this evening with some information about some upcoming events at the high school in terms of the music program. I would also like to invite you to attend an Evening of the Arts, and that will be held at SES next Wednesday, March eighteenth, from six to eight P.M. It's not a formal program, so you can come and go as you please. There are always a lot of interesting stations there. So, if you have an hour of time that you can spend, I would encourage you to stop in. And the last item I have is, on Friday, the evening of Friday, February twenty-seventh, Southmoreland Primary Center held a Read Across America event. That evening was very well received. There were over eighty families in attendance, and most of our faculty and staff were also there volunteering. They had some daytime activities that were also going on. They had guest readers, among them Truppa Lamani from the Greensburg Barracks. Mr. Pollard had his students there with different robotics projects and things that they had done, and those are, that's always a big hit, both for the high school kids and the primary center kids, as they interact and learn about some of the things that are going on at our high school. So, it was a very nice event. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the faculty and staff and Mr. Clara, who got that project off the ground. It was very well done. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Solicitor's report?
I've set up a conference call with the Fayette County Board of Assessment Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor, and our expert on the Spirit SPE case, and be talking with them next week and reporting back to you about the, his view of the building that we had the tour of at the end of last month. We'll have another status conference on that in March. There's no trial date set yet, and I'll be reporting back on his preliminary findings, and then whether or not to go ahead with a formal appraisal or not. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Citizens' comments? Seeing none, any board members have anything? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everybody.